Go ahead and call the meeting order. I'd ask for board action to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Poppins.
Thank you. Poppins has a second. Let me call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. You call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Speakers can come on up. They'll be limited to five minutes. Just state your name and address, please.
Good morning. Betty Otten, 4678-7273, N.T. I'm here in a different capacity. I'm here to give you an update of what's going on in the legislature for Ernie trying to bring bills to, I don't know, can you, how do I zoom out on that? Just keep moving it?
That's probably best.
You might have to just keep moving it.
Okay. Well, anyway, he's worked a very long time on trying to bring legislative action to help Lincoln County lower property taxes. And so these are the bills that he's been working on. And last Thursday, he went and was brought up, was House Bill 1053. And that was the one penny sales tax. And that was for the public, for jails, for justice centers, for, he actually added roads and bridges because he, through all the whole summer, he thought, some of the people told him that they thought it was too small, or too short of a subject of what they could use the money for. And then I know probably Commissioner Schmidt is going to give an update to the things, but anyway, there was a, he really thought, because he got a lot of pushback from the administration because it's an election year and they didn't want to raise taxes as per se. But Ernie's always sold this, that it's not really a property tax, or it's not really a tax increase. It's because if it's adopted and you guys take it, it has to go back to the public to decide whether they want it on their property taxes or if they want to go to a penny sales tax. Well, this went on and on and on and on. And I think Commissioner Schmidt will go for that. But it got actually pushed now till this Thursday. And he really thought that, because it was a really hard lift, but he really thought that the support that he had for it would at least get it out of committee and onto the floor. However, the committee saw that there was actually no support from his own commissioners for Lincoln County. And it totally went sideways. So the bill that he wrote for Lincoln County is probably going to die on Thursday. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come up and make a comment? All right. If not, any commissioners have reports today?
Madam Chair, I'd like to follow up on what Betty has talked about.
Go ahead.
We, there was a testimony and the bill itself, if you really study it, gives a, it is a local control issue. Because it gives the county commissioners the ability to levy up to, at the original bill was to one penny. And it was for, as Betty has mentioned, for capital expenditures, for jails, for buildings, for courtroom space. And one, in the testimony, it's hard for a legislator to keep up with them because now they said it was too broad. We wanted to narrow it down. So when the committee left, it was postponed to, would be like this Thursday. And now they've, they've pushed it back to the next Thursday. And Representative Otten was going to change this and change it so that it was a half cent, not a whole cent, but a half cent, and that it would only be for jails, courthouses, and courtrooms. So it was very limited back to that. And one of the things I have to agree with, all commissioners, when you go there, they count noses. And if you're not there to represent the commission or not representing counties, they don't know that there's a whole lot of support out there. So I think that this has been a struggle for counties forever. The other bill I want to mention, too, is Representative Otten. And you know, he is a man of few words, but is well respected. But he also has a bill, 1045, which is a cannabis bill, which would take some of the tax money that the state would receive and return back to counties to cover their expenses. And that also has been pushed back to this Thursday. Couple of other comments that I want to talk about. Yesterday, I had a very interesting meeting down in Hudson talking to Anna Witt, who is here this morning. Good morning. We talked about a number of things, but I learned a lot about the CO2 pipeline that counties are going to have to look at. And that is where they liquefy CO2 and are going to wish to pump that to, up to the Bakken and inject that into the area. I think that's got a lot of, a lot of information that has to come forward before that thing is ever put into action. So that was very interesting. We had a nice visit about the boards. And then I'm really excited about, next week I'll be bringing to you a new member for the Planning and Zoning Board, a guy by the name of Scott Green. And we'll offer him for your approval to be put on the P&amp;Z board. So Madam Chair, that's my comments.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a report?
Madam Chair.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yes. Yesterday, Commissioner Schmidt and I met in Canton here at the Depot with Jesse Francourt, Jeff Tanner, both people that are involved with economic development in our areas and also represent the Sub Metro Growth Alliance in regard to a possible, again, regional wastewater facility involving the communities of Worthing, Canton, and Lennox. And again, these are just preliminary discussions. They're taking place to see if there is any interest. Also trying to inform us about the opportunity now, maybe, that something like this could happen with, seems like to be availability of more federal funds right now. And also with the possible construction project going forward along Highway 18 in the year 2023. Is this the time to maybe look at something of this nature? So again, we're a long ways away from dotting any i's and crossing t's. There's going to be a lot of more information coming forth from him when he's ready. I know that he would like to present some information to the commission sometime in the near future. And I think that that would be a wise thing to do. And obviously, we have to look at cost and what those areas would involve for these metropolitan areas. But anything else you'd like to add about that?
No, I think you did a good job, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on to our regular business. We have a public hearing. Sean or Sheri, who's going to tee that one up?
This is a public hearing pursuant to SDCL 7810 for the purpose of changing the boundaries of the commissioner districts to divide and redistrict the county so that each district contains as near as possible an equal number of residents as determined by the last preceding federal decennial census.
Thank you. This is our public hearing. Sheri, do you have anything that you want to, do you want to run through the alternatives that we got from CCOG?
So the first map that we have available is the alternative one. This does have splits, or does split up quite a few of the precincts. But you'll see that the deviation is 4.85. And then we've got the second alternative that takes the District 4 down through 279th. And that one gives us a deviation of 5.34. And Alternative 3, that gives us a deviation of 4.97. And Alternative 4, we have a deviation of 6.20. Of course, we do have the fifth alternative with the stripes down. And that gives us a deviation of 7.85. The other alternative, of course, which we don't have a map for because it would just be a map of the county, would be the at-large. We did have the public meetings through the month of December. We've, did we not attach the comment cards? We had the comment cards. Okay. I'll have to get the comment cards for you because you were supposed to have those. But through the five different meetings, the last one we had here. Kayla, can we get the comment cards from here or do we got to go in? Probably not. But if this one doesn't take the stripes? So those are the six options for redistricting. And then we'll get the comment cards brought out.
Okay. Do you know kind of what the end result was with the comments?
I would have to look at the comment cards. There was not very many comment cards, in all honesty. Maybe a handful of them.
Okay.
I didn't have anything turned in to me outside of the meetings.
Well, while we're waiting for that, do any of the commissioners have any question for staff?
And I do have CCOG here if they have any questions in regards to how they got the maps.
Sheri, which one, which one ended up with Harrisburg getting split up? Or was there more than one that ended up splitting?
There, most of them had split up to Harrisburg. Option 4, income, or Option 4 is the one that keeps most of the precincts. There's only one split outside of the current precincts that we have. But the Option 3 and 4 keeps the cities in one. You know, keeps the city of Harrisburg all encompassed.
Okay.
Sheri, under which of the options are there the fewest changes or splits to the precincts?
That would be Option 4.
Option 4. Okay. Do you know how many precincts are split up under Option 4?
There's two.
Okay.
And which, which ones were they, Sheri?
But 211, Kayla, which precincts got split in Option 4?
210, Delapree, and there was one tiny split in Springdale. And there's just the comment cards that we've received back.
Thank you.
So it looks like you have received 11 comment cards overall?
Yep.
Any commissioners care to make a comment? Well, go ahead then. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to come up and speak to this, she'll be limited to three minutes. If you have somebody that's going to kind of say the same thing, please appoint a representative to do that. Thank you. Good morning. Please state your name and address, please.
Good morning. Commissioner Chad Skiles, 820 North Dakota Street here in Canton. This morning, you'll begin the debate on what will direct the future of Lincoln County for the next 10 years, with that being how your constituents will elect the five individuals seated in front of me. I want to start off by thanking the commission for its willingness to take this topic to the public by scheduling a total of five public hearings and to listen to your constituents, study their ideas and suggestions, and hopefully act on the majority desires to see Lincoln County proceed. You are deciding basically on two options, whether to continue to elect commissioners in districts or to elect all commissioners at large. Currently, of the 66 counties of South Dakota, 16 elect their commissioners at large while the others elect by districts. Lincoln County has a unique situation that no other county in South Dakota can claim. That being, we are the fastest growing county in the state and also the sixth fastest growing county in the country. I want to put that into perspective that some may not realize. When the county numbers were designated back in the 1970s, the top nine populated counties were designated 1 through 9. Then the rest were numbered in alphabetical order. That's how Minnehaha County became 1, Pennington 2, Brown 3, and how Lincoln County fell into the number 44. In my line of work, that is how my primary ambulance that I work out of has its call sign, 449. If the numbers were to be reassigned today in the same way, my call sign would be 39. As Lincoln County is now the third most populated county in the state, some say in another 10 years it will be in the 2 slot, but that remains to be seen. When this whole process first started and I attended the first public meeting in Harrisburg a couple of months ago, I was on the side of keeping districts. My reason was a simple one. Being a resident of the rural part of Lincoln County, I did not want to lose my voice on the commission for which I was always guaranteed on the districts. But as I continued to attend more public meetings, listened to more residents state their opinions and ideas, and heard the difference commissioners discussing it, I came to realize that perhaps I needed to take another look at my stand on this issue. I studied it closely. I talked with county employees. And I've visited with a lot of citizens from all over the county. I also appreciated the honest feedback that I received from some of the commissioners. I kept hearing the same thing over and over. It is time for a change in Lincoln County because of our unique growing pains. As each one of you sitting in front of me at the dais knows, I have become a fixture in Lincoln County commission meetings for the last year and a half. Every Tuesday morning, I'm in the back, following agendas, listening and learning. I attend many other meetings as well. What I've learned most importantly is that the voice of the people is the gold standard. And that should be what elected, what every elected commissioner should think. I heard it from many times, from many different people. Yet as strong as my opinion are on many subjects, even I can change my mind. And I've been through the process of listening. And yes, my opinion has gone full circle on the districting issue. It is time for Lincoln County to adopt an at-large concept of electing its commissioners. That will make it fair to all your constituents, give us equal opportunity in the election process, and free to truly represent all citizens. Please keep politics, campaigning, elections, and elections out of your decision today and vote to go with the at-large concept. It is time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak to this? Good morning.
Good morning. Betty Otten, 4678-7273, N.T. I'm going to go back to all of the places when we were talking about the public meetings and even on today's agenda. Why was the at-large position never made public? Why was it, it's always out there and even out front? It's always the five options. Well, why is that important? Well, it's exactly the reason that the comment cards are out there. It says, please indicate your preferred alternative out of the current options and the reason why. Well, the at-large was never given as an option in any of the public meetings. It was only brought up by people in the audience. So that's why it makes a difference. It should always have been all six options. It should always have been out here on the boards, at-large. There should have been an out, an at-large option. And again, across the state, there are 16 counties that are at-large, including our biggest one, which is Minnehaha County. I believe that we need to go at-large and I encourage your vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners? Thoughts? Comments?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we should adopt a at-large, at-large plan for redistricting. And that's my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right. Well, let's discuss it then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the reason behind my rationale here, Madam Chair, is, you know, we recently had, well, I shouldn't say recently, the number of times we've had planning and zoning issues come before this commission, both before I got on this commission as well as during my tenure. And one of the things I've noticed is that with the increasing growth and as the cities increase their footprint, under South Dakota law, the cities are then responsible for planning and zoning decisions. And it takes those decisions out of the hands of the county commission, as well it should, because those cities now have control over their footprint. Our footprint as a county is getting smaller by the year. And that means that we have less control, authority, and jurisdiction over planning and zoning issues. But we still have to deal with planning and zoning issues that affect people outside of the municipalities. However, because of the unique position that Lincoln County is in, and I mean that with regard to extensive population growth up in the northern part of the county, you have a ever-growing number of citizens who live in the cities who, you know, no longer have any say over planning and zoning issues when it comes to holding their commissioner accountable on a certain vote. So for example, if you were a commissioner that occupies a district within, entirely within the city of Sioux Falls, it means you're making planning and zoning decisions that obviously affect people who live in the rural areas. But those people have no mechanism for political accountability. And so by going at-large, you create a scenario where every commissioner is now responsible to every citizen. And the problem, I shouldn't say a problem, the scenario is only going to get more evident as the years go on. Recently, we had the city of Sioux Falls give a good presentation on what growth is going to look like in the Springdale Township. That's a township that I currently have the distinction or pleasure representing. And in that area, what the city of Sioux Falls said is once they install sewer and water, there is a potential that there could be up to 70,000 residents who live in that area. Now, they didn't give a timeframe for that. I think their timeframe was anywhere from 25 to 50 years. But we're going to see significant growth over the next 10 years. And that leads me to my second point here, and that's population growth imbalance. Right now, or I should say, over the last 10 years, Lincoln County has become the ninth fastest growing county in the nation when you take it over the last 10 years. We are experiencing tremendous rate of growth in this county. And what that means is, is that the number of people that live in the certain districts, you know, I think my district was over by 2,000 and some people over the course of 10 years. And when we did redistricting, I think Commissioner Schmidt's district was over even larger than that. Conversely, Commissioner Gibbon's district was, was short of people by some 2,000 people, just because of where we saw the population growth in the northern counties. Well, if, you know, we adopt an at-large policy, we no longer have to worry about districts having too many people living in them. So where you have an imbalance. If you go at-large, then those issues don't matter. So that's the other concern I have. The third concern I have about going back to a district model is under almost all of the realistic scenarios that have been presented here, you know, for example, you would see the commissioner who represents the southern part of the county representing some 85 to 90% of the landmass. Now, it's not about land, it's about people. But there's two important considerations that need to be taken into consideration there. You also represent the people who live in those townships. And you would have to be responsible for more township board meetings. And that individual would have to be responsible for more cities that they represent as well. So just pragmatically speaking, if you put one person in charge of a, or not in charge, but allow them to represent a larger landmass like that, it just pragmatically speaking, it deprives those people in all those smaller, different cities and townships the opportunity to have more time with that commissioner. And so that is another reason that I would offer as going at-large instead of the district model. Lastly, I think we just need to keep it simple. We need to use the KISS principle here. I'd rather not see a split precincts up. I think that's highly disfavored. I understand that under some of the realistic proposals that have been submitted here, that there are one or two scenarios where precincts get split up. But I think that doesn't do any justice to the people who live in those precincts. We just need to make it easy for people to vote. And I take that comment or adopt that stance because of what happened, I think, in the last special election. There were a couple, for a variety of reasons, outside the control of the county. There was a reason why the polling places had to be changed. And for whatever reason, you know, people get accustomed to going to the same church or the same community center or the same location to do their voting at. And it becomes a habit, and it becomes a ritual, and it becomes part of the culture of the community. You know, for example, I know where my church is, where I go to vote at, on the corner of 57th and Minnesota. But that changed in the special election because there was construction going on in that parking lot. Well, you know, I had to figure out, there's two other churches three blocks away. I drove to the first church I drove to, it wasn't the right one. I drove to the second one, it's the right one. Those two churches are literally only a block away from each other. So a lot of churches up in Sioux Falls. So it even happened to myself. And I think we just, that happens to a lot of other people as well. They don't know the exact location they should go to in order to vote. So let's not split the precincts up. You know, let's keep it simple. Let's make it easy for people to understand where they're going to go vote. And so for those reasons, in addition to the fact that I think the public comments have been overwhelmingly in support of going at-large, that I make the motion to adopt an at-large scenario here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins?
There's a lot of good arguments in there. There's some I will agree fully with and some that I maybe not so strongly feel about. The individual that I have spoken with, their biggest concern that I see is the difficulty of getting people to run in general. And their fear is if we go at-large, the individuals in a small area could be next door neighbors. neighbors, could represent the whole county. They believe that there's safety in having the diversity by having districts. For that, my main reason, excuse my hoarse voice, I'm probably still leaning at this point to pick the option four, just to maintain diversity, because it is about people, and we have diversity within the county so that all of the county can have their uniqueness represented on, at this table. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just, I'll be really brief. The folks that I've spoken with, they do like the thought that they have one county commissioner that they can call in their district, and they like that diversity, and your comments are well-taken, because that's what the folks, at least in my district, were telling me. So, and I'm also looking at option four as a viable option for us today. Commissioner Schmidt?
Madam Chair, I think that I have never debated, or I should debate it, but spent more time studying this particular issue at this particular time. And Commissioner Ahrens is right. You look at the future of this county and you look at growth, and you say, what is the best option for, for the future? Now, we all make cases for that Minnehaha County and Cottington County, and there are 16 counties, and Chad, your statistics are correct. However, there is pushback, and I did talk with Cindy Heiburger, who is the current chair of the Minnehaha County Commission. Did she have any reaction, or do they have any reaction from the outlying areas, because their entire commission is Sioux Falls, with Cindy being, having a, her husband has a repair shop outside? And she said, yes, there was, and there are, they hear complaints from their, from the rural areas that they don't have representation out there, that people don't take the time to look out there, et cetera. I called another, my commission friend up in Brown County, and Brown County, right now, could change. I don't know how that's going to go, but Duane said that there has been a lot of individuals that have come forward, that have said that they want to go back to a district thing. So, you got both sides. You can, you can weigh both sides. I am concerned for this reason. We say, we say we're an ag county, and we want to maintain an ag county. Well, we currently have one representative that does represent an ag county, are the townships and the people out there, Commissioner Gibbon. So, he is a guy, he farms, he knows what's going on. He's not somebody that says they were born on a farm once in their life, and they drive through the country and think they understand agriculture. They don't. So, if you want to maintain an ag presence out there, you damn well better have a representative that takes care of that. The other thing that concerns me is planning and zoning, because under the, under the district systems today, we get to appoint somebody from, that represents kind of our area. And what you're going to hear next week is a young man who has some ag background, but he lives in the city. But if you go at-large, you can appoint people from anywhere. They could all be from the city, they could all be from there. The other thing that you've got to be prepared to think about is this, and I know it's popular amongst the group here, and this was the same group that traveled to all the meetings. However, if you look at that, and you have your planning and zoning person just, could be from anywhere, and the future will be eventually, maybe it'll take four, six, eight years, you will pretty well have everybody from the north end of this county that will run it. I mean, that's, that's, that's just the way it goes. So, having looked at all of that, and having heard from people, well-meaning people, and it's a tough call for me, but I had an interesting phone call this morning on the way in, and a person who was in favor of it had changed their mind and said, you know, and they believe, after evaluation, that we should stay with districts. So, I can't support Commissioner Ahrens at this point in time. I know that does, that makes me probably very unpopular with some individuals, but this is what I honestly believe is the best for this county for years to come, to have one representative. And I look around at major metropolitan areas. If you go to Minneapolis, for example, they have districts, and they have stayed with districts because they have someone that is accountable. And I'm sure that this is not only there, but I haven't checked any other places. So, with that, I would support District Number Four. It has the, in my mind, it has the most equal distribution of citizenry, and it kind of maintains what we currently have. So, that's where, that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbon?
I'd like to thank everyone who contacted me in regard to this, because I've heard from both sides as well, and a number of individuals in District Two that, yes, they would like to have more representation, but at the same time, they do understand that they do have one representative, and that means a great deal to them. On the other hand, I also heard from individuals that said, hey, you know, the only thing constant in life is change. If we do change, we do have a possibility of actually getting more from the southern part. We don't know, because we don't know what the voters would do. So, I mean, again, it's, it's both ways. I think it's inevitable down the road, if it's not now, 10 years from now, we'll have to go at-large if the growth continues as, as we predict. I know there is some very valid points to Number Four. I've looked at that as well. It does have a lot of good things as well, if districts are kept. But I think probably at, at this particular time, I think that it's important that we look at what's now, not only good for us right now, but what's really is good in the future. So, I think if you're looking long-term, you need to look at at-large.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, or on the motion? Can you clarify the motion? The motion was to go at-large.
Correct.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landin?
Consider an alternative motion?
Substitute motion, Madam Chair, to adopt District Number, or the program Number Four, alternative of Number Four.
I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I have had, in my district, made a special effort, and I had eight particular meetings with citizens or with residents throughout that whole area. In fact, it was apartment dwellers with one. And apartment dwellers are interesting, because they don't even know what county they live in, nor do they care. But for the most part, here is what you heard from residents in the city of Sioux Falls. Comments like, is it broken? We don't care. They had no opinion. The only thing that they wanted to talk about was taxes. That was what their major concern was, because, and they wanted to know what kind of services they got for their taxes, because we don't get anything, we pay the majority of it. I heard that over and over and over again, but as far as the representation, there was really no consensus at all. They just assumed, keep, they think their things were fine the way they are, just lower my taxes. So...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I've got an apartment complex in my neighborhood, and my son happens to be friends with some of the boys who live there, and I speak to their parents, and they know which county they live in, and they care about their county. And they care about what school their kids go to, and they care about taxes as well, like Commissioner Schmidt said. But my direct experience with people who live in apartments is, I guess, been the opposite of yours. And so, I find that those people are good people, and they're members of the community, and they want to participate. And so, I guess I've just had a different experience with the apartment residents and citizens that live down the street from me.
Thank you for that. Anyone else on the board?
I think there's been a lot of good discussion, and both sides, and there may be a time in the future we go at-large. We've got, it's very convenient to point to Minnehaha County, because it fits the narrative of a at-large, but we also have Pennington County and many other counties that don't go at-large and maintain at District. And again, the conversations that I had with individuals that raised this question to me was just to make sure that, as the county is extremely diversified, it truly gives the ability to have diversity on this board. And as far as Number Four, it seems to create the least havoc by only having two precincts that are slightly modified or split for elections. So, I think the CCOG was able to accomplish the objective of creating districts that were, you know, met the criteria as well as met the demand for not having many of the precincts split, so...
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, call the question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ahrens?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. So, we'll redistrict with alternative Number Four that was prepared by CCOG. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, Mr. Floyd, you here?
So, I have Adam Polly here from IMEG, and we're going to give you the update on the County Road 143 project. You know, last year, you gave me permission to do boring coring on 152 and 143. So, this is, basically, this is going to be a report of that, what that is, but, you know, then also, last year in budget season, we cut off $1 million of my project. So, we ended up just focusing on County Road 143, which is the ethanol plant road, three and a half miles down there. So, he's going to kind of go through with the report, what they found in it, and then what cost options are, and then we'll be open for questions. So, all right?
Good morning, Commissioners. As Terry led with, I am Adam Polly with IMEG. We'll be talking about Lincoln County 143. We're down here 46 to Lincoln County 152, right by Poet, southwest of Hudson. About three and a half miles ADT, the average daily traffic is 1,200. Around 18% of that is truck traffic. And there is a reconstruction of South Dakota Highway 46, scheduled for '23, '24, but that could be pushed back as well. So, current roadway conditions, these are a couple cores that American Engineering and Testing took, took pictures of. Right now, the roadway is 26 feet wide. The asphalt thickness ranges from anywhere to seven and a half to 10 inches thick. The aggregate base thickness ranges from four and a half to seven inches thick. The roadway has longitudinal and transverse cracking. There's minimal rutting and alligator cracking throughout. So, the bituminous condition, as you can see from these cores, is not, not very good. We're looking at stripping here. This is where the adhesive between the layers of asphalt or between the layer of asphalt and base course breaks. And then you get these, you can clearly see the layers in the asphalt here. So, this is the main reason why a simple mill and overlay will not work for this road. Once you, you know, we try to do a one-inch mill and put two inches of asphalt back on, but once you start milling, these pieces will start breaking off, and we got a bigger problem.
So, if I could interrupt here, then...
Sure.
Are these taken how close together, or, I mean, these two samples like that, are they miles apart or feet apart, or...
I don't know the exact location. I could get that, it's in the...
Well, no, no, I just...
But I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Another reason why we can't do just a simple mill and overlay is the subgrade conditions. You know, we only have four and a half to seven inches of base course. After that, it's black dirt, muck. So, if you start doing a mill and overlay, I think it's an expensive Band-Aid. I don't, I think it's going to keep breaking up as we go along. So, that's the current roadway condition. Just some repair history. Chip seal was placed in 2016 and 2012, patching from the county forces annually since 2015. Anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000 annually has been on this road from the county forces. Roadway safety concerns. The north intersection with 152 is a concern with the high truck traffic, narrow roadway. If you're northbound, going up to this intersection, there's a pretty good hill up to the curves, which limits your sight distance. So, we have two options coming from the American Engineering and Testing report. Option one is roadway reconstruction that would not take care of all the safety concerns. So, basically, we're going to go down 22 inches and build the road back up, and that'll be it. So, the roadway ditches, field approaches, the roadway profile will all stay the same. Option two is a full reconstruction. So, we're looking at design speed, roadway width, you know, we'll widen the road to today's standards, we'll get rid of the hills that prevent sight distance, and take care of any drainage issues as well. So, the estimated construction cost right now, about $3 million for option one, and about $5 million for option two. Both of these sections will have four inches of asphalt, six inches of base course, and 12 inches of sand subbase, and that is straight from the geotechnical report.
And what was the daily travel on that section of road?
1,200.
A day?
A day. And roughly 18% was truck traffic.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
If you could go back one second, please. If one were to choose the lesser of the two options, is there anything in that option that could not, that would have to be tore out if they then later wanted to improve to the, for the design speed roadway of the rest of the options? Do you know what I mean, what I'm saying? Can you do part of the project in the lesser and then finish the project later, type of deal with all infringing on some of the aspects that you did in the first part of the phase?
So, you're saying, build that, build the road?
Could you do this in two phases? Phase one is the $3 million, and then come back later to finish the project? Can you do it basically in that fashion?
I, I think you could. It'll be difficult.
Well, we do a lot of difficulties, especially as you're getting to the next page of funding. So, we've, it's one of those things that would be a consideration.
So, we could go down, keep the same roadway width, build the road back up, but when you come back in phase two, like you're talking about, I mean, we have to widen the road. So, you're going back down again, building the road back up, and then doing all the ditch work.
So, that, you would tear the road back out? That's what I'm...
You would tear, yeah.
Yeah, so then we would, so we would lose some of the aspects that we did in the first phase, so...
Yeah.
Could one design it in a fashion that wouldn't have to do that as a, maybe alternative?
All right.
And again, apologies for my throat being a little hoarse today.
I can't think of one offhand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not saying it's impossible.
How many miles of road, how many miles of road are we talking about here, in the context of these two options?
3.6.
Yeah, 3.6.
So, again, for funding, you know, $3 to $5 million... So again, for funding, you know, 3 to 5 million dollars. We could go through the state to get some funding. But most of those options, they require, or will require, the county to go up to today's standards. So to get that federal funding, we would need to widen the road and meet the design speed. Other options, we have to look into still. You know, there's possibly ARPA funds that you guys have, local matches from Poet or anybody down there, you know, those are options that we're going to look into this year.
What are the state funding options that you're referencing there?
So there's a zero interest loan through the state. And there's also a federal funding option. I believe the federal one is where you would have to go up to design speeds to today's standards.
Do you first have to, if you, if you make the application for the federal funds, do you first have to get the funds to design it and do the engineering? Or is that just a build?
It's just a build.
Okay.
We would want to, we would want to do some sort of preliminary engineering before we go to this funding, so we know exactly the amount, or as close as we can, the amount that we want for the cost of the road. Right now, I mean, we're ballparking, 3 million to 5 million.
Yeah, what, what you're saying is before we make an application to the state, we need to present them with, we can't just present them with a wish list. You got to give them the form of engineering.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
What is the, what is the, what does it cost in order to get engineering done on a project like this?
So for preliminary engineering, to get to that point, so we know exactly what we need to do and the quantities, we're looking at somewhere 75 to 100,000 bucks. And that would, we would then know exactly what we need to do, how much right away we need to buy, how much dirt we need to add to the site. Again, we got to look more in depth on those funding options.
Sure.
Sure. I think, I think probably, correct me if I'm wrong, the next step would then be to hire IMEG to do the preliminary study and then come back to us with maybe some more solid numbers. Is that a fair statement?
I will reiterate, Madam Chair, that stretch of road is getting to be a mess.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair, a couple if any.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know, Terry, or do we have any traffic accident reports association, associated with these three miles to share with the board and the public that's here? Is it, is there accident reports to?
The latest I would have would be that was, that was done with the master transportation plan. So probably from 18, from 18 to current, I do not. I know there's been a few accidents down there on that stretch the last few years. But I would have to dig up those numbers.
I think that'd be pertinent to, to have that when we're making a decision. If, if, you know, we're talking about some of the potential concerns about safety, but extrapolate to actual accident reports or not, that would be, I think, a helpful asset. And then Terry, do you know, is it, this is by no means the only road that needs attention. We go back to our study. How did this, these three miles in the previous study, was that not included? Because, or was it included at time?
The master transportation study, yeah, this year was not studied in depth. This year was just, it was kind of a, you know, like a 5,000-foot view type thing, because traffic up north was probably predominantly what we were worried about or concerned about.
Sure.
So we didn't have any, they didn't do any studying as far as future needs on the, on that road section down there. So.
And what's the plan for this summer, just doing some patchwork and stuff? Because it's going to obviously take some time to get the engineering and hopefully find the funding for it.
Yeah. So, so first of all, you know, talking with IMEG, they're looking 24, maybe it'd be the earliest we'd be looking to build if we started design and engineering on it now. So we're a little ways out. And maybe even 25, depends. But as an interim, I know this year, talking with Jared, he went down and did some measuring down there. And we're going to be doing a bunch of patching ourself down there this year. And again, just throwing, throwing a lift on it. Hopefully, it'll get us through to, for another three years down there. So, but we're looking at, what was it, 3,500 ton, 4,000 ton of asphalt we'll have to throw on that? So.
Does it costly to do those core samples on roads? Because I think that was a very informative image that we saw.
Is it expensive? No, just doing the, the core for the asphalt? No. And typically, whenever, so in the past, when we do a mill and overlay, we'll go through and, and random spots do these asphalt cores, so we know what, what kind of thickness we're looking at on a road, you know. And mainly that's so we can get, you know, you'll get asphalt conditioned, but you'll get the thickness to see if we can mill off any, and then we put some back on top.
So are you thinking of doing any milling and overlay?
On that this year?
Yeah. I mean, this is, it's this or this, right?
Correct. So, so my, I guess my, where I would, my recommendation would be that we're going to go down there this year. We're going to put a mat on it, on a lot of it. And hopefully, that'll tie us through. We'll, I'll get the permission to, my recommendation is to proceed with engineering and design on this, with the, with the thoughts of actually doing the full rebuild. You know, to me, I guess if you're going to do it, you're not going to get less traffic down there. And with heavy trucks and everything, I mean, option three is great. I understand it's about money, you know. But to me, it's about safety. And if we just take it down and put it back up, we still have no shoulders on the roads down there. You have deep ditches, you know. There, that's issues that we really need to be concerned about. But you're talking, you know, sick 400 trucks a day, 300 trucks a day. You know, people need to be, have somewhere to pull off if they have issues down there. And right now, there is nothing. So.
How many roads do we have zero shoulder on, Terry, in the, in the county that are asphalted?
With steep, steep ditches? I know a handful.
So I, it's the, the bigger point of the board is that this is a road that definitely needs attention. There are other roads that we need to find improvement for, for safety as well. So the bigger scope of this is the task that we have of improving all of our roads. And this is definitely has the top of our attention because of the, the truck traffic and things like that. But as we continue to grow in this county, we've gotten very complacent to remove funding from our roads. And I hate to say it, but I think we can tell that by simply driving on our roads. So I hope that we can find additional funding for this road as well as other roads and bridges. So, thank you.
Terry, this, this stretch of road is on your five-year plan that you submitted, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's 22's project for, it was supposed to be a mill and overlay. And I left it on as that. But the further we got into it after, after my five-year plan was submitted, it was clear that, that a mill and overlay is, is not what it needs.
Yeah. And I, I think that's what the public was interested in trying to figure out here is it was originally slated to be a mill and overlay, and that's the discussion we had when we had the budget discussions. But now you did the testing and basically came back worse than what you thought it was, right?
Correct. Correct. You know, and I, I said, I do have 800,000 or 850,000 towards that project for, for this year that's in the budget, you know. So we would have money to proceed with the engineering costs on that if we wanted to. But again, you know, I think if you look three years down the road, you know, to do the full reconstruction, I mean, that's plenty of time to figure out other funding options. So.
Sure. Sounds like it. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. No.
I apologize, Terry. When I, we had to do a vote from the county association on legislation that's in front of the legislature right now. And so I apologize for taking that hiatus. I just want to comment on that. And if I'm redundant, I apologize too. But seeing is believing. And I drove down yesterday, and when I found out all of the issues that are going into this road thing, we're going to have to do some action. Because when Adam told me about they were going to close down Highway 46, you're going to have all these truck traffic that's going on there. And then you turn on, pass the ethanol plant. And when you drive on that, I mean, from the surface wise, you can drive if you've got a vehicle, it's not so bad. But you put about 900 to 1,000 bushels of grain behind a semi, you got an issue. And that thing is deteriorating and going to deteriorate fast. So, you know, we got 800,000, but we got to look at a bigger picture. And I don't know, Terry, what we're talking about, 3 million, 5 million. But that's an issue that we have to look at, not from the dollar sign. I mean, let's just take away the dollar sign of what it costs. But what are the economic impacts of that road on our county? If you look at all of the truck traffic that comes in, or you're looking the, the production that that ethanol plant produces for taxes, for employment, and for any number of other things, these are the issues that I think we got to weigh as well as cost. Because what's going to look at and how that's going to affect that, that plant from being as productive as it's could, we're going to have to find those funds available. And maybe we have to even pinch our budget a little bit to get a few, few more hundred thousand dollars to give you a little latitude, Terry, so not only you can test, but you can take some action.
Terry, what's the next step here?
Next step would, and again, I think I have it on my, my ask, is looking for permission to move forward to do preliminary engineering and doing some design on this.
I think what we need to do, Terry, is we've heard the presentation today of the study, and that's what was on our agenda. So we just need to bring it back and ask for permission to do that.
Didn't I have that in my, on my agenda, on the agenda?
I don't have it on the agenda. Well, no, I've got the bridge project.
You know what? I might have put it in the, the comments section of my, of the.
Yeah, it's not listed on the agenda. It's just the presentation.
Okay, my bad. So I can come back next week.
No, it's fine. It's fine. I just think we need to bring it back and take action on it.
I'll have something next week. That's fine.
Okay, perfect.
I was just going to ask, Carol, are weight limits they are on now or not? Is it?
No, they're, they're, it'll be, it'll probably be, depending on weather, it'll probably be late February.
Okay. I was wondering whether wise, if they would be put on earlier or not.
Yeah, yeah. We did, again, we did pass, you know, we passed a resolution to put up weight limits, the, the spring load limits. I think we did that a few weeks ago.
Yes.
But those won't be in place until the signs go up, then they're, then they're being enforced. So.
Thank you. Terry, do you want to move on to the bridge project?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So, so the next item I have is looking for permission or authorization to go to bid for this, this year's bridge projects. And again, I can't remember, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's the two bridges over by Lennox. The one bridge, we have a cost share with the city of Lennox for replacement. And then the other one is about a mile or so down the road west of that. So we have two structures that we're going to bid. I think we're right around, cost estimates are coming in for the two of them. I think it's right around 9, 950, 950,000, something like that. So, and again, both of these are, are budgeted projects. So.
Commissioner Gibbon, where are those two bridges?
Isn't one on Lincoln County 103?
Yeah, they're both on County Road 103, or Cleveland Street. The one is Cleveland Street on the west side of Lennox that runs north-south.
Yeah. Now, I looked, are they, it's made mentions of a, of a two-box carb, two-box culvert, and then a smaller three.
So the one is, it's a four-barrel, I believe.
I thought it was two and three, but.
Oh, you're right. It's a three, 11 by nine, three-barrel, 11 by nine, cast in place. And then the other one is a two-barrel, 12 by eight.
Are those those round culverts that we got now?
Yes. Yeah, those are large, yeah, they're going west of the Quaker group.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Is that what you call them now? You don't call them box culvert. You call them, what was the other term you used?
Well, cast in place, box. That's what, that's what they'll be, it won't be, or you get a pre-cast, but we don't do pre-cast.
The one would replace the bridge, correct?
Correct. Well, the one is, the bridge is, the bridge that's getting replaced is the one just, I don't know, 300 feet north, 400 feet north of 44 there.
And I know you've put rock underneath there in the past, too, to reinforce it because it's.
And that, that's the one that we have the, the cost share, the, the cost agreement, share cost with the city of Lennox.
Madam Chair, authorized to advertise for a request for bids for those, for that bridge project?
Second.
Thank you. And just for clarification, that's Bridge Projects 42-010-109 and 42-004-100.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to go into executive session, pursuant to SDCL 125 to sub three and sub four.
So moved.
I'm second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner here?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We'll move on to item five on our agenda. It's board action on a request for a proposal
for services for a construction manager slash owner representative, services slash project manager. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to present? We did have two proposals that were submitted.
Yes, Senator.
Go ahead.
I believe that the TIGRA proposal was responsive to the RFP. The second one that you received, I don't know is actually responsive to the RFP. So the one that's probably before you at the moment are those two. But TIGRA does meet all of the requests in the RFP.
Thank you for that. I'd go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the consulting agreement with TIGRA.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.